We'll call this committee the whole meeting. The order. First on the agenda is review the 2018 village budget.
I will start with this. You should have received both the form, the budget form that will ultimately be approved from Lynn that had the expensive or all the, well, the regular part that gets approved and then the more in-depth one that has all the detail. And then you should have also received the budget summary from me a little bit later. And that, what I did is try to take out some of the kind of bigger pieces, you know, rather than going through, you know, $25, $50, $100 and so forth. I kind of tried to highlight the bigger changes that were made from the 2017 budget. And first of all, I just wanted to point out that the draft budget, as we are present, as staff was presenting it, is now at the levy cap. Literally at the levy cap to the penny. And as I mentioned before, we had some challenges with this budget because the net new construction was 1.47%, whereas last year it was 3.46%. So that left us with a total overall levy of only a $13,000 increase. And I have it here in this summary that the total, the levy increase of the 2018 budget over, proposed budget over the 2017 budget is $1,734. So that's the amount of increase of the total levy from 2017. It's just under $2,000. And then I have the graphic there just to show how it's, the total levy has changed since 2012. And so as you can see, the past three years, including this proposed budget for 2018, is pretty flat. Just wanted to, you know, a lot of the things that, the changes that we have proposed for this budget are the ones that throughout the last couple of meetings, we've been bringing forward to you guys so that you were aware of them, of what we were proposing. And those were the different projects and programs that we were proposing either suspend or eliminate. And, you know, with the idea that in 2019 and 2020, when our budget position is expected to be better, we'll have the opportunity, I think in 2019, to start bringing some of those back. And I think in 2020, be a little closer to where we would like to be. Well, not ideally, but that would be unlimited. Our debt service has dropped. And that's why it's, well, that gave us a lot, was helpful. And that was partially due to the restructuring of debt, if you recall, last year or the year before. The general fund, and then that's where I start breaking it down into identifying the different areas that had the, I highlighted areas that were, that changed by $1,000 or more from the 2017 budget. And we talked about elections in the past. We had some, an increase of about $1,200 we're proposing for municipal building maintenance. I had mentioned before about the increase in employee benefits. Overall, village-wide, it's in the $38,000 range. This is just for the general government category, so that does include police. Some of the more, and I'm meeting again, I met today with the property liability insurance. I'm hoping that we can, we might be able to realize an even lower rate. Are you aware of the public safety changes? Police salaries, that's an increase of $17,406 from the 2017 budget. And in the past, as you recall, I was mentioning that with the contract requirement of the regular, or the probationary officers moving to regular full-time, that was going to be about $30,000. The reason why this number is lower is because the $30,000 that I was talking about was an increase of their actual salary that they were making in 2017 to what their actual salary would be in 2018. And it wasn't until we got really into the nuts and bolts of it that we realized that the 2017 budgeted police salary had some extra in it. So that's why instead of a $30,000 increase over budget, it's still a $30,000 increase over actual, but we had budgeted for more salary in 2017 than we needed based on the contract, if you followed that. You know, that was kind of lengthy. But I just wanted to explain why that number is different than what we've been talking about. We bumped up police overtime. The retirement increased also, and that's obviously because the payroll increases, as does, you know, and the insurance does as well. And the health insurance waiver is down $6,000. Our former chief was taking the health insurance waiver. What I did is I factored in $6,000, the equivalent of a health insurance waiver, into the health insurance for our, the chief that we will have, that we're working on hiring. And I figured that regardless of what the chief takes one way or another, it's either going to be health insurance waiver or the health insurance itself, but that we would limit that amount through contract to $6,000. So I've accounted for that in here. As well as a pay range for the chief as we get to hire a new one. Some of the significant changes in public works. Most of these are due to a shifting, not so much an overall increase, but he reduced some in different areas of public works to increase other areas. And the one that had the most significant increase was in street maintenance.
That's where you guys are charging their labor for the most part anyway. So a lot of the accounts that are typically overfonded, like parks or whatever, it's been shifted around. I've been doing that for the last few years, so there's no real, the nut change for labor is $2,500. So, not bad.
Refuge collection, we have an increase, but that's offset because, by the revenue, because the refuse collection is a fee that's charged on the tax bills. Some of the significant decreases, and like I said, this is, in public works, this is where Carl had reduced these in order to build up the street maintenance. Some of them were snow and ice control, street signs, mower maintenance. And these are ones like, you know, were basically just adjusted to more closely reflect what our actual usage is so that we could use that extra in the street maintenance. Health and human services, there really was no change. Culture and recreation had a minor increase overall of 1.62% from 2017, excuse me, 2018. The biggest increase is in the library, however, that is not on the village because the village request for the library is going to be the same as it was in 2017. But the contribution that Alles is providing to the library makes up for the entire amount of the increase in the overall library budget. So the library budget will be at, will be flat for 20, from 2017 to 2018. It's just, like I said, it shows up as an increase in here, but that's because we have an equal increase in the revenue.
Just out of curiosity, why is Alles increasing it by?
It's based on circulation. And circulation is not.
Yeah, it actually doesn't come from Alles, it comes from the colony.
Yeah, it's the colony dollars and it's not part of circulation.
It has to do with the fact that we're doing a lot better with the library circulation.
So when Rachel would give these reports and she's showing that these numbers, these graphs are going up, that will help us in 2019. So every time you see that increase, there's more money coming from, because we're servicing a bigger population.
And this increase is actually based on 2016.
Yeah.
So the one, the increase that we're realizing and we'll get in 2018 was based on 2016 circulation.
Okay. Thank you.
Some of the significant decreases in the culture and recreation and was Opera House, library building maintenance, and the Otto Miller athletic field. And these decreases were really because of our postponing projects or improvements that we would like, but we simply cannot afford for 2018. So those are the ones that, once our budget gets, moves up again for 2019, we'll have to look at these types of projects that we were postponing to see what makes it back into the budget. And we have to work on prioritizing it, like we talked about last time, with comparison with the strategic plan goals. Some of the other, then we're moving on to conservation and development. And this category includes the community planning, mapping, and promotion. And we pretty much wiped out that budget. Planning and mapping, we do have a, our comprehensive plan and strategic plan are relatively current, so we're not in a diary of updating those. Our mapping, in this past year, if you recall, we had a technical assistance project with East Central RPC where they did a, created a GIS site for us where the employees can now do more of our mapping in-house because of that tool that they provided for us. And then we also still have some resources that we can ask for mapping from the East Central. So we felt for 2018, we pretty much took that mapping budget and planning and mapping budget down to almost, well, pretty low. Same, and by the way, these numbers are not the, this is the increase or decrease. So this isn't the total number, this is in the budget, this is the amount that it increased or decreased from the previous year. And then community promotion, we took out that one too. And that's one that I think moving forward and that we'd have to look at a lot, because we don't do that a whole lot. The community promotion that we do, do do is all free stuff and that can only get us so far, but we have been actively doing that. The locate in Wisconsin program through WEDC, through the regional partnership group, through Fox Cities Chamber. Those are all things that we've actively used, you know, along with Facebook and different things like Village Voice. And the Village Voice. But I think that's something that as we continue wanting to grow, we're going to, we may have to, we should really bump that up at some point and get more serious about marketing with Village and promoting it. But we do, I think we've done quite well with the free resources that we've been using. Other financing, this includes the building of reserve funds for future projects, strategic plan implementation, and contingency funds. There's no increases that we're proposing. This is the category that got hit pretty hard by decreases. We suspended the Otto Miller Capital Reserve Fund. This was to build up for the reserve for some projects that we wanted to do. Suspension of the dam inspection reserve fund. Carl reviewed it and felt that we have enough in that fund currently to pay for the inspections for the next two years. So we felt comfortable suspending it, putting money into it for this year. The suspension of the strategic plan implementation fund, that we eliminated completely. That's the thing, the project fund, or the fund that we kind of had as a catch-all for anything that was moving forward, the strategic plan and achieving some of those goals. One example of this past year was the kiosk in downtown Hortonville. That was put again, you know, used this fund to pay for that. So we are eliminating that one for, or suspending it for 2018, proposing suspending it for 2018. We're maintaining the education contingency fund. The village provides an education fund of up to $1,000 or 50% of continuing education for employees. Last year, we removed, or reduced it from $5,000 to $3,000. I didn't want to go any lower than that because by contract in the WPPA with the police union, it is written in there that the village will provide up to $1,000. So technically, we have five officers that could apply for it, and I didn't want to completely wipe it out. The likelihood of it being fully utilized by Alles is slim, but I didn't want us to not have it there and end up scrambling and needing it next year. The contingency fund, we're proposing maintaining at the current level, which I believe is Some of the areas beyond that that I just wanted to highlight because I thought they might bring up some questions and I wanted to address them. First is, let's see, as I mentioned last time, we're continuing to seek, you know, we're going to keep hitting up foundation grants, we're looking for different things like that so we can still keep making forward progress. But the limitation on that, that we've all talked about and I've identified with staff, is that we're not going to, you know, try to look for projects to do. It's going to solely be things that we have the capacity to complete, you know, period. You know, not have to hire somebody, somebody else out or anything like that, but stuff that we can really do and that is absolutely, you know, in line with our strategic plan. So it's not just doing things for the sake of doing things, but doing things that we would like to do, that we have in our plan to do, we just don't have the funding, funds to do it. As far as Grand View, I've been getting a lot of questions about that from the public. As, as we mentioned before, we, that's certainly a high priority one, it's not within budget, but we are applying for the municipal street discretionary improvement program. That's where we've contracted with MSA to help us with the grant proposal. That's the very competitive one, but we are, we've been working with MSA recently and gathering those letters of recommendation from community leaders as part of that application process. If we were to be successful in that, that would cover about 50 or 50% of the project. And the TID III, we intentionally created the boundaries of it where we have included the, in the plan, that that TID money would be used to cover the municipal share of that Grand View project. So ideally, we'd like to see it, if we're successful with that grant, is to have Grand View done in 2019.
Carl, what was that, remember again? Was it like $240?
For Grand View?
Yeah.
$350?
$350, okay.
Plus, probably somewhere between $2300 and $2400.
Though, if you recall, the last time we talked about budget, we had one more number that we were waiting for, and that was a revenue number. That was for the state road, state roads, and we had estimated it, and we were thinking that we were going to end up getting more, and we did. So that was an increase from 2017 to 2018, our road, state road aid increased by $6,800. Library aid increased by $4,300. I got to look at, there might be a typo in there with that one and the other one I talked about. I know the library overall budget is flat. The part coming from the village is flat. So I got to check that, that number, there might be a typo in there. We bumped up the building, the projected building permit increase, an increase that by $5,500. It's just bringing it more in line with what we've been actually seeing. And also, we, to make sure that we didn't just over-project, we also looked at the actual developments going on right now, what we knew was going to be coming in and what kind of revenue we could expect from it. We put in, also bumped up water and sewer hookup fees. We felt that was in more in alignment with the development that we're seeing again. The event permit fees, that's a new revenue category, and that's based on what we're talking about. Next on the agenda is the proposed event policy. The summer rec program, I mentioned before that we increased the revenues and are charging more in the fees for that so that that is not on the levy, so that the expenses equal the revenues and that is self-sustaining. And even then, I think our, our fees for that are quite reasonable.
Did you anticipate losing any, having a decrease in enrollment because of the?
We, actually, we need a decrease in enrollment.
But did you factor that?
Yes, this past year, we had over 200, and that was too much for the staff that were there. So in talking to Mike Summers, he asked if we could cap it at 150. So what I've done is projected, I think, I think I figured 100 participants at the 150 resident rate and 50 at the 225 non-resident rate. So yes, we intentionally projected, we're going to put a cap on it. Some of the revenue decreases, the police liaison contract of $7690, and I just want to point out the reason why this is a decrease in revenue is because when I had, that whole police contract thing, you know, when we were comparing Algaia County with here, and I had pulled in the revenue that we get from the school district, that was all based on the 2017 budget. And this is based on the actual, or what I had, the contract is based on actual. So what I had mentioned before, that there is some padding, so to speak, in the staffing for the, you know, salaries for the police department. Well, I projected, I'm using this, this projected decrease in revenue will also be reflected in a decrease in the actual cost. So it's going to end up being a zero, but I just wanted to point that out because all of that stuff that I had done previously was all based on the 2017 budget, which was projections and estimates. And now we've calculated out the police salaries based on contract, and there was $12,000 we weigh in there. So I just wanted to point that out, that it shows up as a negative, as a decrease in revenue, but there's an equal decrease in the expenses because, you know, in the salaries because of that padding that was in there. And regardless of how many hours and so forth are in that contract, it is a contract that is based on the actual hours worked. So the income, the revenue will increase, will offset the expense no matter what, because we always have, you know, we're getting paid for what we provide. So I just wanted to point that out because I wanted to clear up any confusion that that could cause by that number. Fire call fees, if you recall, last year, we had proposed doing fire call fees. But since the, there's the talk that started when the town of Hortonia came to me earlier in the year before coming to the board, I did not pursue that at that point because I didn't think it would be a good decision to pursue that and then have some solution. I felt we needed to leave that be until the whole thing worked out. And then we increased the Opera House rent, revenue by $1,000. We've steadily seen increases in Opera House rent, which, just as a little side note, we now have a request for fencing classes, a Renaissance group coming in to do them.
Is that the group from Appleton?
Yes. So that's kind of the rundown of the more, the kind of highlights of it, the bigger items I wanted to highlight. You know, as I said, I identify mostly those that fluctuated by $1,000 or more, and all of those were pulled out here. And then also, Lynn got the rates today, and it reflects a one-half percent decrease in the tax rate from 2017. In 2017, we had a tenth of a percent decrease. So we've had a decrease in the tax rate two years in a row, and that equates to $6.52 decrease for the hypothetical $150,000 home.
That's actually weekly.
Absolutely. I mean, to me, it's, a small increase is good, a zero is great, and any kind of negative whatsoever is superb. So that's, that's the draft budget that staff has put together to present to the board.
Thank you for the Cliff Notes. This was awesome.
Well, I'd like to just thank you guys.
Yeah.
Having this done, you know, before going in and making sure it gets done, and I know it was extremely difficult, everything that we just had to go through. It's actually really refreshing to have this done and put in front of us with, okay, it's done, it is, this is how we're going to make the work, and we're okay with that.
I had heard the budget was like this drawn-out process.
It was, it is.
It used to be for us too.
I think the board will plan on like three, four meetings and they go really late.
This has drove me crazy because it was like you're asking, you know, the seven of us who really don't have a clue, I mean, to make $50 decisions, it was, it was the dumbest thing in the world, it was just.
Yeah, this is much better than we went through in the past where they bring this in here, this much over.
It's just unexpected.
And I just, I just really appreciate it. When it's all of you that know what.
We're very fortunate that we all work together very well, and other than pulling hairs out on Brian's head, we, in all seriousness, I mean, we've, we're also dependent on a lot of roles and everything, but there really wasn't a power struggle, there was no scrambling for money, it was everybody pitching in to see what they could do to close the gap. And ultimately, that's, that's what happened here, so.
Well, again, it's really, really, really appreciated. But I know it's a lot of hard work, and I just, I really wanted to just say thank you.
Yeah, and having this summary was my godsend.
Well, I'm putting, I'm working now on, for the public hearing and for the public, I'm working on putting this in a, like a report form of a brochure kind of thing, similar to this, but more in a, in a presentation kind of document. I just think that to get it out into the public and have it available for the residents that certainly have access to the full budget, I just think that, trying to put it in a little bit more narrative and explanatory so that it's easier to digest and understand. So try to increase that transparency. So that's what we're going to have for the public hearing on the budget.
Lynn, I do have one question. And I probably asked this before, and I apologize for doing that again. Our contingency fund, we have $X amount in a contingency fund. I don't know if you know what that is offhand, so what is that?
We have $30,000, it's a budget line item. It's not a fund that stays from year to year, it's just a budget line.
Okay.
And we have $30,000 in there for 2017, we've wiped it out.
Okay, so there isn't then a contingency?
There's no reserve equity after some of the other items?
Okay, so there's no rainy day fund that, like the state has?
There is a levy stabilization and emergency fund, yes.
Okay. The reason I'm asking the question is if.
But that one does not have that much money in it.
If something would hap, excuse me, happen, you know, is there a place we can go, I'm not talking about a thousand dollars happening, I'm talking about something happens where it's a $10,000.
Or no.
Yeah, something.
That's insurance. We have, well, we have insurance, Kelly, and we also have the fund balance itself, which is what you consider the savings account in any household. So after you've gone ahead and brought in all of your paychecks and you've gone ahead and paid all of your bills, you still have money in the banks. That's what we have sitting behind, and it's the money that's not sitting aside in any of the reserve accounts, like for Otto Miller or for election equipment or anything like that. It's just simply the money that the auditors were talking about. The rainy day fund, that money that you have behind, that they said we were getting down on, they wanted to see us have more in. That's what's behind it.
That's why we started putting the $30,000 in. Was that the $30,000?
No, that's not the $30,000. It's just simply the way that municipalities spend, you always leave some in the background because otherwise nobody's going to give you a loan, or aren't going to have anything for emergencies, or aren't going to have anything to draw on.
And I think, like I said, I think I asked this question, and I apologize for that, but there is something there.
Yeah, the contingency fund is the name that the state puts on this budget line, but it's not the same type of fund as we have set aside for all of the others. And I'll point out too, Lynn had mentioned the levy stabilization fund too, is that's one thing that I thought worked well with staff too, is that once we got this, the number from the state aid that we were waiting for, because we were like within a couple hundred dollars of the levy, that number came in giving us a couple thousand dollars under levy, well, and I shouldn't say under levy, but a couple thousand dollars that we could have backfilled into other things. And while we did bump up a little bit on some of the cuts that we had done in parks, the rest of it went into the levy stabilization rather than.
Actually, it didn't, it went into contingency, or we had to take that one away when we found out that there was another spot in the budget that had to be funded. That was that last one.
I thought we, and I thought we still had some that went in there. I know it was, oh, I thought we were still, we were around a thousand yet, that we were able to put it there.
I think.
Take the whole thing back.
And the other budget?
We can move on to events policy. I guess I'll take, sorry though. Sometime back, we were, for the last year or so, we've been reviewing the potential for creating a special events policy. This policy would basically set some guidelines and rules regarding use of village resources when it comes to private events held either in public properties or on streets, alleys, anything like that. Anyways, I don't know, do you guys have a copy of the events policy? Have you?
That was given to the board during the other meetings?
There was a minor change in there, they had the word, yeah, Village Parks, but I'll pass this around just in case somebody doesn't have it. We've reviewed this, all the departments have reviewed it. There was something that caught up in limbo here last fall, but, or anyways, we've all reviewed it, and we think it's a direction we should go to get our money, to recoup some of our losses regarding some of these accounts. I don't want to point out anyone in particular, but we had a 5K run that required the use of two fireworks employees and multiple police department employees and barricades and signage and, you know, it is draining on public works when your budget's already so tight that these events really hurt more than they help.
And then it comes with the application process too, where that was the other goal, is to try to have it more thought out in advance and hopefully reduce the amount of face time, you know, back and forth so that it's more thought out and established when it comes to across our desk for review and staffing.
Yeah, the policy again is just a policy. The application, try to glean more information from the people who are proposing these events, what their needs are. And then the police department, fireworks department, and administrator would determine what our liabilities would be as far as us supplying resources. would be, as far as us supplying resources.
Is this a policy, or is this something we need to make into the ordinance?
This would be a policy.
Yeah, it's a policy. Is this something that's available? Like eventually, it's gonna be available? Like if somebody's trying to plan an event, they didn't call you, but they could find this online, will it be something that's available on the website?
I think so.
Yes, it will be available once we set it up.
It just makes it easier in the planning process.
The application will just, it won't follow the other applications we have, or like our license downer permits, that kind of stuff.
Not that we need to be like every other community, but is this something that most communities do, or?
Most do. We're one of the few that doesn't.
Yeah, we had polls through the, like, City County Managers Association. I looked at polls where people had asked the question, and every community that responded said that they had some type of policy and charged at a minimum, charged for the actual, hourly of the actual services. I didn't find any that did not charge.
Is this something that we're going to be? Obviously, in session, we're gonna be looking for a motion, or is this to a court?
It's not tonight. Tonight was the meeting where you were going to be working on this one and seeing if you needed any changes or anything else.
I think what I, have we, do they have current copies of the application? The most recent one?
I have one underneath mine that's being passed around now.
I'm just, it's obviously not on the schedule for later,